The road to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. And I will introduce today's clergy. As Counselor Jackson is out of the country in Israel. After the invocation is delivered, I would also ask that members and guests remain standing as you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I have with me today Reverend Willie Bardrick II. He has received his Masters in Divinity and graduated Harvard Divinity School in 2014, on ordained minister in the Baptist tradition. Reverend Bardrick finds interest in political activism in his community. And that's why we recognize him and know him. Community organizing and social entrepreneurship. The Reverend is originally from Atlanta, Georgia, and he graduated from Georgetown University. He's currently Youth and Young Adult Pastor at the historic 12th Baptist Church in Roxbury, former president and CEO of Bold Mold, Inc., Black Men Overtly Leveraging Development, a nonprofit organization that redirects the stereotypical image and statistical direct trajectory of the black male youth by enhancing their growth and nurturing sustainable networks for them. And lastly, Reverend Bardrick serves as the Director of TBC After-School Program. Without any further ado, it's my honor to introduce Reverend Willie Bardrick II.
Good afternoon. To the mayor of this great city, Mayor Walsh. To the esteemed City Council, this great city of Boston. President of this council, Counselor Linehan. To Baby Blaze. And to my counselor, Counselor Jackson. Let us bow. I invite you to reflect on these words this morning. Oh, Lord our God, we come to you on this afternoon thanking you for life, health, and strength. Thanking you for the honor and duty to respectfully represent the city of Boston. For God, I come to you on this morning on behalf of this leading body to ask that you give them the spirit to be audible and active. For the people need this council to hear them and let them know that their voices are being heard. We need every person of this council to be the voices for those who the great author and intellectual Audger Lord said, "Do not have a voice." So, God, I ask that you allow these words to resonate in this room on this morning. For the gravity of this aforementioned expression points to the reasons that each person of this council has been chosen to represent your people. For you have been chosen to not only make the city of Boston a great place that we all love, but you have been chosen to your positions to be the hearers at the places where those voices meet the nexus of power and to be the connective tissues that enables all of us to be doers. And so, God, I beseech thee to allow this council to be audible and active. Audible and active so that you are both conscious critics and constant constructors of our communities. Audible and active so that you can still see the hurt and pain and not lose the compassion needed to help our people. Audible and active so that you are leaders, but more importantly, servants. Audible and active so that you continue to uphold tradition while trailblazing a vision towards the future. Audible and active where the concerns of those who are impoverished are just as important as those who are privileged. Audible and active so that the protests for justice and peace are translated into efficacious policies. So, God, on this great glorious day, touch the hearts, minds, and souls of this council and constantly remind them that every person that they represent has value. Give them the strength and focus to endure to do this task of bettering the education of our children, addressing the social ills of our communities, creating avenues of opportunity and success for every resident, and protecting those who are oppressed at the margins of our society. God, give them the humility to hear and a heart to feel all of your people. Give them the patience to override the pride and to not only use their power as a platform, but use their power to progress us towards peace. Bless every decision. Bless every interaction. Bless every deliberation. And bless every innovation as we all become audible and active to make Boston a better place in the name of the One who is the Most High and Lifted up. To God be the glory for the great things that we have done. And to God be the glory, for we will be audible and active. And let every heart, mind, and soul say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Bardrick. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you, Reverend Bardrick, for your inspiring message and for your work throughout the city and your contribution to make this the great city that it is. We don't have any presentations today, and the good Reverend stole a little bit of my thunder because of his closeness and relationship with Michelle Wu. But well appreciated because Michelle Wu had a baby boy. Seven pounds, 13 ounces, and 20 inches long at 11:39 PM last night. Blaze Francis Pawoski. Welcome, Blaze. So, the Boston City Council, as I understand it, has had its first baby.
Yep.
Good stuff. Very. We can all celebrate. Absolutely, fathers come. We have a lot of responsibility there. And grandfathers. I'd also like to recognize that Daisy De La Rosa celebrates her fourth wedding anniversary today. Give Daisy. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last week's meeting will stand approved. Hearing and seeing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor of the May.
Docket number 1846, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend funds in the amount of $3,100,000 from the Boston Foundation for a period January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2017. The purpose of the funding is to support enhanced anti-violence measures as the Boston Foundation's Street Safe Boston Program ends and transitions to a partnership with the Boston Center for Youth and Families Street Worker Program.
A docket 1846 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 1847, message and order authorizing the city of Austin to accept and expend a grant in the amount not to exceed $400,000 from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of the Conservation Services Park Land Acquisition and Renovation for Communities Program to provide capital improvements relative to Phase III of the Low Pressed Park Project located in the neighborhood of East Boston.
Docket 1847 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1848, message and order authorizing the city of Austin to accept and expand a grant awarded in the amount not to exceed $250,000 from the United States Department of the Interior's National Park Service to the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program administered by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, to provide capital improvements relative to McLaughlin Playground located in the Mission Hill neighborhood of Boston.
A docket 1847 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Oh, I'm sorry. Docket 1848 will join 1847 as being assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 1849, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $103,812.03 in the form of a multi-year grant, income-eligible center-based daycare program for seven subsidized daycare slots for the City Hall Child Care Center, Community Child Care Program for low-income parents awarded by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care to be administered by the Centers for Youth and Families, Boston Center for Youth and Families.
Counselor President.
I thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we suspend in passes. This is the annual grant for the City Hall daycare, which supports our own workforce. Again, it's an annual grant and I move for suspension and passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley moves suspension and passage of the rules on docket 1849. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1849 has passed. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize that Counselor Flaherty is in attendance?
Would you like me to read Counselor Murphy's too?
Please.
Docket number 1850, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept a donation in the amount of $96,096 from the Boston Police Foundation for use by the Boston Police Department to provide reflective safety vests to all sworn offices. These vests will be used to provide visibility during on-scene response, large events, and celebrations, and will further the city's law enforcement efforts relating to community policing.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of Public Safety, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1850, which is a $96,000 grant from the Boston Police Foundation to the Boston Police Department for the vests, reflective safety vests, to be worn by all Boston Police personnel. It's a timely topic now, given what's happening across the country. We don't have a lot of time between now and the last meeting, which is next week, to even get a hearing together. So, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage and get this equipment out to the field offices as they're sorely needed at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1851. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1851. Eight, wait. Excuse me. Sorry. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1850. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1850 has passed.
Docket number 1851, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a donation of $57,000 donated by the Last Call Foundation to enhance firefighters' health and safety through the purchase of industrial washing machines for cleaning bunker gear.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to move suspension of the rules and passage on docket 1851 at this time. Couple of weeks ago, the Committee on Public Safety held a hearing on this very matter. And moving forward with this type of safety equipment, we welcomed the firefighter, Michael, the late firefighter, Michael Kennedy's mother, Kathy Crosby Bell, who has founded the Last Call Foundation to make each and every firefighter nationwide as safe as they possibly could be. We had a conversation about the cost of these machines, and Kathy Crosby Bell is following through on her promise to the City Council, go out and raise the money. This is, I'm sure, our first installment, and welcome news for the firefighting community in Boston. At this time, I move suspension of the rules and passage of 1851. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1851. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1851 has passed.
Docket number 1852, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend funds of $20,000 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Public Health, FY15. This award is made for the purpose of deploying, maintaining, and implementing 10 mass decontamination units.
A quick recess. Thank you for that quick recess. Counselor Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1852. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1852 has passed.
Docket number 1853, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $5,100 in the form of a grant awarded by the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Child and Adult Care Nutrition Program to be administered by the Boston Center for Youth and Families.
Counselor Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1853. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1853 has passed.
Docket number 1854, message and order approving a homeroom petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Removing the City of Boston's Parks Department from Approval of Street Closure Permitting Process."
A docket 1854 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 1855, message and order for the approval of a homeroom petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to Election Nomination Petitions in the City of Boston." This petition will create a more equitable process for candidates.
A docket 1855 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 1856, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Christine Pulgeni as chairman of the Boston, of the City of Boston's Licensing Board.
Docket 1856 will be placed on file.
Would you like me to read both?
Please read docket 1857 and 1858.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1857, communication from Counselor Josh Zachem that he will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meetings on Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, and Wednesday, December 17th, 2014. Docket number 1858, communication from Counselor Tito Jackson that he will not be in attendance at the meeting, at the Boston City Council meetings on Wednesday, December 10th, 2014, and Wednesday, December 17th, 2014.
A docket 1857 and 1858 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1859, communication was received from the city clerk on the university accountability reports, the fall 2014 statistics.
A docket 1859 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, madam clerk.
Docket number 1730, the Committee on Environment and Parks, to which was referred on November 19th, 2014. Docket number 1730, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $1,320,000 to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources for the Community Clean Resilience Initiative Project Implementation Grant to be administered by the city's Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space Department. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, madam clerk. The chair recognized the chair of the Committee on Environment and Parks, Counselor O'Malley on docket 1730.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Monday, the committee held a hearing on docket number 1730, which is a message and order authorizing the city to accept and expend a grant of $1.3 million, a little over $1.3 million. This is a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, and this grant will be administered by the city's Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space Department, also known as DOER. The grant will allow DOER's Renewable and Alternative Energy Division to partially fund the installation of batteries to back up the electrical system at four community centers around the city that also double as emergency shelters. Joseph LaRusso, the manager of Energy Efficiency and Distribution Generation Finance, testified on behalf of the administration. This grant will allow the city to install solar photovoltaic arrays, which is basically a collection of solar panels with battery storage on the roofs of four Boston community centers. Curtis Hall in Jamaica Plain, the Tobin Community Center in Mission Hill, the Shelburne Community Center in Roxbury, and the Rosendale Community Center slash the Flaherty Pool in Rosendale. These facilities currently serve as emergency shelters and were chosen because of their locations, accessibility, and amenity. All four centers also have had their roofs replaced and are able to support the weight that comes with installing solar PV system. This sounds a little wonky, but I was actually very, very excited about this grant in this hearing. Basically, what we will do is we'll be able to install these solar panels, make the city more energy efficient, lower our utility bills for these four centers, and these are centers that will serve as emergency shelters should there be a natural disaster or some other need to have people congregating in a safe area. The cost associated will decrease anywhere from 6.25% at Curtis Hall, all the way to 31.4% in Rosendale Community Center. That's real savings, and it's better for our, lessening our impact on environmental, our impact on the environment. PV system will provide the facilities with clean renewable energy during non-emergencies and, as I said, will reduce energy usage and save the city money. I strongly urge passage of this, obviously, and I think this is a great first step and look forward to working with the Walsh administration in the months and years ahead of making sure that more of our buildings, of our city buildings, are energy efficient. I did ask about this building. We're somewhat limited with the space that we could have solar panels on the roof of City Hall, given the number of large, multi-story buildings around us. But there is an opportunity to look at here, to look at some other schools, to look at libraries, to look at other large buildings. This is a very, very exciting thing. I'm excited that we have this grant. I think it's a great first step. I look forward to expanding it, working with the Walsh administration and all of you in 2015 and beyond. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1730. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1730 has passed. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1682, message and order authorizing the Boston Fair Housing Commission to accept and expend the FY14 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Assistance Program Grant Fund awarded to the Boston Fair Housing Commission. This request for authorization to accept and expend grant funds relates to payments for the commission's investigatory work under the Fair Housing Assistance Partnership Agreement, of which $104,282,000 has been received and $32,000 is pending, for a total of $136,782.
The chair recognized the chair of the Committee on Housing, Counselor Baker on docket 1682.
Thank you, Mr. President. The order speaks for itself. It's authorization for the Boston Fair Housing Commission to accept funds from HUD in a total of $136,782 to use for investigatory work under the Fair Housing Assistance Partnership Agreement, of which $104,282 has already been received and $32,500 is pending. So, I urge passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1682. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1682 has been passed.
Docket number 1731, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the FY14 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Partnership Program Grant of $263,848 to the Boston Fair Housing Commission to conduct a housing discrimination testing program in partnership with Suffolk University Law School.
The chair recognized the chair of the Committee on Housing, Counselor Baker on docket 1731.
Again, Mr. President, on Monday morning, we heard this. Docket also is to authorize the city to accept and expend $263,848 in grant funds from HUD, Fair Housing Assistant Program. It's a partnership with Suffolk University to conduct housing discrimination testing. So, I urge passage of this docket number 1731.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1731. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1731 has been passed.
Docket number 1734, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Ms. Carrie Walsh Lowe as an alternate member of the Board of Appeal for a term expiring November 1st, 2016.
Our chair recognized the chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Counselor Lamatina on docket 1734.
In Board of Appeals, we held a hearing on Monday at 1:00. Ms. Lowe is a South Boston resident, and she's currently, works for Hill International Incorporated, Inc. She has many years of experience as a project manager at that company, facilitating communications between clients and project team members and managing project schedules and budget. She also has onsite construction supervision experience and procurements experience and more move management experience. She's very knowledgeable about the importance of community meetings and the input every season from community members. So, I think she's a fine candidate for the zoning board of appeals and urge you to confirm her nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina moves confirmation of acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1734. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1734 has passed.
Docket number 1808, message and order approving the city of Boston's application to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordination Council for certified project status for 327 to 347 Summer Street, the Log Me In Project, the renovation of a presently vacant fire damaged building in the city of Boston's Innovation District into a 117,000 square foot office building located in the crosstown slash South Boston Economic Opportunity Area. office building located in the crosstown slash South Boston Economic Opportunity Area, and for approval of the Tax Increment Financing Plan, including a tax increment financing agreement regarding real estate taxes between the city and Log Me In Project.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor, Councilor Sal Lamatina, on docket.
Held a hearing on docket number 1808. At the hearing was John Barrows, Chief of Economic Development, and Ron Rockwell, Commissioner Assistant. He was attending. Also in attendance was Jim Kelleher from, he's the CFO of Log Me In, and Michael Donahue, who's the CEO of Log Me In. I had the opportunity to visit this site on Friday. Log Me In is a computer technology product development firm with its world headquarters located at 320 Summer Street in South Boston. To include the renovation and fit out roughly 120,000 square foot building at 333 Summer Street. Right now, at 333 Summer Street is a vacant building that recently had a huge fire. So consideration is also being given for the city of Boston TIF, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Economic Development Incentive Program, to facilitate this expansion, to support this business expansion, both the city of Boston and the Commonwealth, and will be providing incentives in the form of TIF by the city of Boston and abandoned building tax credit to the Commonwealth. So what they're looking for, the city of Boston, actually, is a $2.5 million TIF over 13 years. Currently, at 333 Summer Street, they pay the city of Boston $150,000 in taxes per year. With this buildout in 13 years, it will generate an additional $11.7 million in tax dollars. And at the same time, it's going to provide another 400 to 500 new jobs to the city of Boston. Hopefully, the new employees coming to the city of Boston, hopefully moving into our city and spending their money in the city of Boston, which will generate more taxes to the city of Boston. So I urge my colleagues to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Councilor President Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I thought that I'd take the opportunity to, again, I was at the hearing, and Councilor Lamatina did an excellent job in asking all the right questions about in any time that the city invests its tax dollars in a private concern. And we've done this in the past. We've done it over the, over probably the past five years on my watch as economic development chief and chair. And so this particular company is perched to take off and create some 450 jobs over the next five years. This is part of their agreement. So for us to give them this tax break, they confirm and in a contract will create these jobs, and there's a mechanism in between to make, to if they do not do that. They started in Boston 18 months ago with four or five employees. Presently, they're at 150 or 180 employees. And to think that a company could move in to Summer Street and then in five or six years have some 700, 800 employees at that particular site seems really valuable and worth the investment. You look at the context over the past seven or eight years regarding public investment in private companies. We started off, at least in my tenure, with Liberty Mutual. In that particular TIF at a time when nobody was, there were no construction jobs, there was no rehabilitation, there was no spending, that company put up its money, along with our money, and there was a $17 million TIF as part of our investment, and that proved that they created all the jobs already for that particular site. Went from 17, we invested, I think, 12 in Vertex, $5 million in the Fenway, and now we're down to $2.5 million. And it seems that if you are investing, especially in a robust economy like this, each investment should be less money on behalf of the city, that the private concern should be able to handle the greatest amount. And in the, and using those examples, we kept a worldwide company in finance here. We created a worldwide home for Vertex in the biochemical industry, and this is an opportunity to have a innovation and technology industry expand in our city. So I'll be supporting and voting in favor of this thing. I think it's a, it's a good deal for Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1808. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 1808 has been passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 1732.
Docket number 1732, Message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $25,000 in contributions received in the United States Department of Agricultural Local Food Promotion Program to support an urban agricultural visioning group and planning process for the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, Councilor Presley, on docket 1732.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, I held a hearing on a grant for the Office of Food Initiatives, and it was to utilize a grant for an urban agriculture visioning group and planning process for the city of Boston. And I have to admit, when I first saw it, $25,000, I said, $25,000 for visioning and planning? You just need to bring great ideas and a conference room table and a whiteboard. But I've since learned, and I do agree, that it is necessary to hire a facilitator and a contractor for this group. They'll facilitate conversations between a diverse group of stakeholders in Boston to determine ways the city can best support local farmers in Boston. This grant is from the United States Department of Agriculture's Local Food Promotion Program. I recommend passage of this docket, and want to thank the Office of Food Initiatives for their work to support local farmers and make healthy, locally grown food more accessible and affordable for all Bostonians. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Councilor Presley moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1732. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1732 has been passed. Madam Chair, could you read docket 0362 and 0363?
Docket number 0362, Order for Hearing to Review the Fiscal Year 2013 Audited Financial Statements. And docket number 0363, Order for Hearing to Review the Fiscal Year 2014 Budget.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight, Councilor Yancy, on docket 0362 and 0364.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Post Audit and Oversight Committee is winding down its activities for calendar year 2014. We have examined most of the departments of city government, more than 80% of the $2.7 billion budget. I want to thank the administration for their cooperation. This has been an arduous process on both sides and precedent setting in terms of the sheer number of hearings of the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. Most recently, we reviewed the Boston Redevelopment Authority and the EDIC. I want to thank Councilor Flaherty for participating in that hearing. We've also had the opportunity to review the leadership and executive compensation for the Boston Public Libraries. We've taken a look at some grants regarding the vocational educational objectives of the Boston Public Library. And our final hearing for the calendar year is going to be next Tuesday, the 16th of December, 10:00 a.m. in these chambers, and at that time, we're going to look out, look at the closing out of fiscal year 2013, and hopefully, at least some preliminary closeout numbers for 2014. So I want to thank particularly the central staff and my staff for all the work that they've put into this, and I'll have more to say on the topic at our very next council meeting. So I ask that these matters remain in committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Yancy. Docket 0362 and 0363 will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1860, Councilors Flaherty and Murphy offer the following order for hearing regarding school safety and CO Sync 9/11 technology.
Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President.
On docket 186.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend my colleague, the Chair of Public Safety, for working with me on this. We met with representatives of COPS Sync 911 a month ago, it's actually almost a year ago, whereby they have this very interesting software that will give real-time alerts to the nearest responding officers, as well as a GPS locator, and will print out school floor plans that can pinpoint the location of an active shooter to aid police in their response, as well as, just as critical, the evacuation effort. So no need, no need to remind anyone in this room that it's coming up on the two-year anniversary of the tragic incident at Sandy Hook Elementary, but we get some updated statistics. I know you see in the first whereas it indicates where we were in terms of incidents, not just in Boston, across the country, but that was updated as of this morning, as of December 2014. There have been 329 incidents of school emergencies, including 65 shootings, 265 threats, and 24 deaths at schools across the country. So we've been very fortunate here in Boston, but like everything else, we want to make sure that we have the best tools and capabilities in the event of an incident. So COPS Sync had come in to see Councilor Murphy and I, and we encouraged them to get out, to make their presence known, and to reach out to the police department, as well as the school department, and they've done that. They've done their homework, they've done their due diligence. They recently came back to us to tell us that they've been warmly received, clearly that I think it's more than appropriate that this council have an opportunity to view this technology and this software. And so it's my hope that we'll have an expedited hearing to ascertain as to whether or not this particular technology makes sense for Boston, and will it be an additional useful tool for our police officers and our first responders in the event, God forbid, we have a situation here in the city where this particular technology needs to be deployed. So I look forward to a hearing, encourage my colleagues to sign on, and want to once again thank Councilor Murphy as Chair for helping sort of guide and lead the process by which COPS Sync. And it reminds me, you know, of similar technology that started on the floor of this body with one of our former colleagues, Councilor Rob Quinavon, ShotSpotter, again, taking advantage of innovation and technology. And who would have thought that ShotSpotter has been paying great dividends for our city across the board, to the point where more people and more communities want more ShotSpotters? That's the gunshot two-stick technology. So this is something, similar lines of that, that if we can get this here in our city will be a model, I think, in several other states across the country. I know New Hampshire, Texas, Virginia, and even closer to home, Saugus, Mass., have taken full advantage of this, and it'd be nice to see if we can get something like this in Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my Vice Chair of Public Safety, Councilor Flaherty, for looping me in on this in the very beginning. It's a sad fact of life in America today that in 2014, we had 131 incidents of school shootings across this country. And, you know, what can we say about that, other than as a society, as a city, we need to protect kids in school from someone who wants to do them harm? And the quickest way for us to save lives is to get to a situation as quickly as possible. We know fire response time, ambulance response time, police response time is always critical during a public safety issue. And this particular software cuts response time more than in half in the event, as Councilor Flaherty said, God forbid, something like Sandy Hook should come to the streets or the schools of Boston. We don't wish it, we don't want it, we hope it never happens, but if it happens, we must be as prepared as anybody to deal with it. And this software is remarkable, and I want to thank Councilor Flaherty for bringing it to my attention, and we suggested jointly that the city council take a look at this, because it would very nearly cut response time in half and be a open flow of communication to those first responders to a situation that is changing minute by minute within a public school. And information is valuable, and this software would guide us to the place where we need to be to afford the most protection for our kids. And I hope it's adopted at some point by the police department and the school department in Boston through the auspices of the mayor, but a good first step is the airing of the hearing here in city council, and I'm proud to join my Flaherty in bringing it here. And I look forward to holding a hearing in the next eight or nine days prior to the clock running out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the makers, and ask to have my name added. This is a tool and a technology we should certainly explore to ensure the safety of our entire school communities, and I would argue, at least conceptually, based upon what I've learned in this, in this moment right here, seems to be a better deterrent in defense than what was previously proposed earlier in the year with pepper spray. So this is something that I think is much smarter and good to explore. So I wish to have my name added, and I commend the makers.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Presley's name. Please add Councilor Yancy's name. Could you please add the Chair's name? Could you add Councilor Baker, Councilor Siomo, Councilor Lamatina, and Councilor O'Malley? Docket 1860 is assigned to the Committee on Public Safety. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, please.
Docket number 1861, Council Linehan for Councilor O'Malley.
Councilor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1861. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1861 has passed.
Docket number 1862, Council Linehan for Councilor O'Malley.
Councilor O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1862. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1862 has passed.
Docket number 1863, Council Linehan for Councilor Baker.
Councilor Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1863. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1863 has passed.
Docket number 1864, Council Linehan for Councilor Baker.
Councilor Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1864. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1864 has passed.
Docket number 1865, Council Linehan for Councilor Yancy.
Council Yancy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1865. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1865 has passed.
Docket number 1866, Council Linehan for Councilor Yancy.
Council Yancy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1866. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1866 has passed.
Docket number 1867, Council Linehan for Councilor Murphy.
Councilor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1867. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1867 has passed.
Docket number 1868, Council Linehan for Councilor Murphy.
Councilor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1868. All in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1868 has passed.
Do you want me to read the next?
Yeah, could you just read 1869, Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1869, Council Linehan for Councilor Murphy offer the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Juan Lopez in the city council.
The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Rules and Administration, Councilor Murphy.
Public process regarding the replacement of the city council's research Public process regarding the replacement of the City Council's Research Director, which took place from September of 2014 until last Friday, I believe. There were over 60 applicants for Mike Nichols' job, and I had asked as Chair of Rules, because it's very cumbersome for a legislative body such as ours to engage in the staffing process, also having the open meeting law apply. And we've seen some horrific cases where the open meeting law actually was misapplied in prior hires around here, because there were numbers of counselors involved in the process, which opens it up to the media and makes a complete three-ring circus out of what should be a simple personnel maneuver. So in order to prevent that type of a scenario from happening again, the Committee on Rules and Administration designated a group of three central staffers, our Staff Director, Daisy Di La Rosa, our Staff Attorney, Christine O'Donnell, and our Staff Receptionist, Lorraine Scatino, who has a background in personnel, to be a screening committee and knock those 60-odd applicants down to a group of five. The committee looked at the five finalists, if you will, the resumes of all of them, and they were all very, very closely bunched together, all very, very talented, dedicated people who would, in the committee's opinion, do an admirable job as the next Research Director. The committee felt, to a person, the five of us, that it would be a good sign moving forward to promote from within one of our own, Juan Lopez, who is a long-serving member of the City Council Central Staff, was one of the five finalists, was seeking the promotion, and was tightly grouped with other people of excellent caliber. And the Rules Committee voted unanimously the other day to support Juan Lopez for a promotion here within the City Council. So I'm before you asking for an affirmative vote on the Rules Committee recommendation as a personnel order to promote one of our own, Juan Lopez, as the next Research Director of the Boston City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1869. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1869 has passed. Madam Clerk, 1870, please.
Docket number 1870, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Murphy offer the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Daniel Shea in the City Council.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy, the Chair of the Rules Committee, on this appointment. Okay. But before we do that, we want to congratulate all of you. Sorry for the interruption. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Docket 1870, I'd like to just say ditto, but I can't. It was the same application process, a different position, Legislative Assistant, which was temporarily held by Addison Coell through this budget cycle, and we had over 100 applicants. And the same committee, Daisy Di La Rosa, Christine O'Donnell, and Lorraine Scatino, narrowed it down to five finalists, each of whom had exceptional qualities and character and capabilities, and each of whom could have done the job. The committee, in reviewing the five, chose Daniel Shea overwhelmingly of the five finalists. We have submitted his resume for your review. He had worked part-time for former Counselor John Connolly and had some familiarity with the council and how it works. And again, the caliber of these folks was outstanding. And as Chair of the Committee on Rules, we took a vote the other day, and we're recommending that Daniel Shea be hired for this position. There are other finalists for both positions, and now we will be searching for a senior legislative analyst since we have promoted from within, and recommending at this time as well that those other finalists be funneled into that process, because they were so good. So at this point, in docket 1870, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Daniel Shea, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1870. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1870 has passed. Madam Clerk, before you move on. I just want to take a moment to congratulate and thank Counselor Murphy on what can be a difficult task, but especially to thank the staff of Lorraine, Christine, and Daisy for purviewing 160 applications to come up with the best people for us. We, in the committee rules hearing, which Counselor Murphy chaired, we grilled them and asked them all the hard questions. They had all the answers. They created a metric, they set it up so that it was the pros in our realm here with the council gave us the best opportunities. And today, I want to congratulate that team, the committee, the Rules Committee, and look forward to working with these, both Dan and Juan in their new capacities here at the council. So, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1871, Counsel Linnahan offer the following order for the appointment of temporary employees in the City Council.
Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1871. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1871 has passed.
Docket number 1872, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Zechem.
Counselor Zechem moves suspension of the rules and... Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1873. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1873 has passed.
Docket number 1874, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Lamatina.
Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1874. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1874 has passed.
Docket number 1875, Counsel Linnahan for Counselor Lamatina.
Counselor Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1875. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1875 has passed.
Mr. President, just one moment.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Hold on one second, we'll do a quick recess. Madam Clerk, please. Counselor Siomo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1873. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1873 has passed. I thank you, Counselor Yancey. I'm informed by the clerk that there are four late-file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
In City Council, Counsel Bill Linnahan for Counsel McCarthy ordered that effective December...
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The first late-file matter has been passed.
In City Council, Counsel Linnahan for Counsel McCarthy.
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The second late-file matter has passed.
Letter from Counselor Timothy P. McCarthy, Boston City Council, District 5. City Council President Linnahan. Dear Counsel President Linnahan, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council's meeting on Wednesday, December 10th, and Wednesday, December 17th, 2014. I will be traveling to Israel, the Jewish Community Relations Council of Greater Boston. Sincerely, Timothy P. McCarthy.
Madam Clerk, please place the third late-file matter on file.
And final late file. From the Office of the Mayor, Martin J. Walsh, to the City Council... City Council, sorry. Dear Councilors, I transmit herewith for your approval an order extending the city's acceptance of Master General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 19, to be effective until June 30th, 2020, upon my approval and execution of a written agreement with the Public Employees' Committee, known as PEC. The PEC will continue to be the exclusive bargaining representative for the coalition of public employees, bargaining units, and retirees of the city of Boston with respect to health insurance coverage until June 30th, 2020. The agreement extends reforms agreed upon in the current PEC agreement and adds further savings estimated to equal approximately $45 million over the five-year period. It also protects the city against potential federal excise taxes and anticipates continued efforts to achieve additional savings through future health insurance procurements. I urge your honorable body to pass this order at its earliest convenience, so that we may move forward with this important initiative in healthcare reform in the city of Boston. Respectfully, Martin J. Walsh, Mayor of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind folks that what this is, is a couple of years ago, former Mayor Manino tried to force the labor unions into a GIC for health insurance, and the City Council blocked those efforts. All of us, in unison, blocked those efforts, and the upshot of that, our taking that action to block, was the Public Employee Commission formed, and the administration at the time was forced to negotiate any changes in healthcare with the 43 presidents of the municipal unions. And that was a good thing for our municipal unions and a good wielding of influence by the City Council. This is good news. Mayor Walsh has taken that process, and before it expired, has struck a new deal through 2020. Obviously, we have to do our fiduciary responsibility, so it should be sent to the proper committee, and we can review it. But it is a good news piece of action that's coming in here, and I just wanted to remind folks of the genesis of where it came from. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. That's appreciated. The fourth late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Ways and Means. Let's see. Is there anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? They may do so at this time. No lights are flashing. We will move on. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Before we move into memorials, I just want to inform folks that we made a decision to move our Christmas party. It was scheduled for the 12/17, and due to the inability of four counselors to be in attendance, we turned it into a New Year's party, which we will hold on Wednesday, January 7th, the day of our first meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you are all... Elaine has notified all your staff and all your folks. So I'd ask all guests to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. It's with honor and that I have this opportunity just to say a few words on behalf of Counselor Murphy. Before I do that, I do want to say that I want to thank you for showing up here today under these circumstances, because we were down to eight folks. It was your showing up here made the world of difference in today's hearing, I mean, today's meeting. And the reason for my comment there is that Counselor Murphy's dad, Stephen J. Murphy, Jr., has passed. He passed on December 6th. He was 83 years old, and he was married to Marjorie for 58 years. And I think it's appropriate, considering the 17 years, 18 years of contribution that Counselor Murphy has made to this body, that we just take a moment to recognize his dad. Steve has three siblings as well, Diane, Kathleen, and Michael. And so you all know that the services are Thursday at 10:00 at St. Pius Church in Milton, and we've provided the transportation for any staff members that would like to attend also. Today's services begin shortly at 4:00 at the Alfred D. Thomas Funeral Home on Granite Avenue, Milton, and Counselor Murphy welcomes and invites all of you to attend. Most people all know that Steve's dad was a cop, and he was a cop for 14 years, and then he... His career was ended short due to a disability. Yep. And he then went on to put himself through law school, and he became an attorney, and he was a former Assistant District Attorney for the Barnstable County. He's a proud Korean War veteran in the Navy, and he's a big guy, like Steve, you know, and a very poignant and opinionated person, just like his son. And so we hope that you can all make the services on behalf of the Murphy family. So that was... So as a council as a whole, Stephen J. Murphy, Jr., for Counselor Flaherty, Eugene Whalen and Paulina Cambera Garcia, for Counselor Lamatina, Audra M. Devlin and Joe Dom Apochiara, for Counselor Linnahan, Flaherty, and Baker, Patrick Mickey McDonough, and for the Chair, Sylvia Sullivan, and for Counselor McCarthy, Edward W. Lynch, and for Counselor Yancey, Dewayne Hampton, and for Counselor O'Malley, Mary Gallagher. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, December 17th, 12:14, 2014, at 12:00. All those in favor adjourn and say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is so adjourned.[1755.83]